Some of my good friends are though.
Start me. It's slow, but it's working.
And there was one like the.
I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Little Miami School Board on Monday, October sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace.
Here.
Mrs. Horvath.
Here.
Mrs. Elmer.
Here.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We always read the mission statement of the Little Miami School. The board believes it is a responsibility of the school system to ensure that each graduate is college and career ready. To these ends, the environment of high expectations and opportunity shall be able to be created that fosters scholarship, citizenship, and develops each student ability to become a productive and responsible member of society. I've got part of that memorized. I need a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Seibert and Mr. Wallace. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Grace.
Yes.
Mrs. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer.
Yes.
Mr. Seibert.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
I think we have treasures reports and financial reports.
Yes, once we'll go through this, but I will ask for the board's approval of the October update of, it used to be called the five-year forecast, I guess it's the four-year now. We still do five, I'll still do five, but it's current plus three years, so it's like a four-year forecast, I guess now.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Seibert.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, as you'll see up on the screen, actually, and you have a handout in front of you also. Like I was speaking before, this is, it used to be called the five-year forecast. Like I said, I think we're calling it the four-year maybe now, maybe the three-year. I'm not sure what we want to call it, but House Bill ninety-six, and we'll get it out here in a minute, change the naming, filing dates, and all those kinds of things. So this is due by October fifteenth, so I just want to go over this, and I'll tell you right off the bat, this is going to change. But when and where and how is a good question, but we're going to go through. There is a online, and which will be submitted, there's about a twenty-three-page document, but I kind of summarized it into some things on here for us that we can go through. Actually, that is not the correct. Where's Brad? Do you have the file I sent you, Brad? That was the twenty-three pager, and if you guys got a lot of time tonight. This is, the one that's up there right now is the detailed one, which is on the agenda. I have the summary that I printed up for you and will go over. But this, of course, is always available, submitted to the state, as always, and can be reviewed. Did I send you the wrong file? If I did, that's. All right, hold on a second, I'm gonna send you a new one, then I must have sent the wrong one. I apologize. Here comes a new one, Brad, I'm sorry about that. See, I really wanted to go over the really long one, it's just.
We were looking forward to it, jeez. As I have my tongue in cheek.
Sorry about that, Brad, it's my mistake. Alrighty, so, once again, this is our October update. If we turn to the first page, there's some assumptions and things have gone on with, that has incorporated into this forecast, and some things, of course, we don't know. Right now is the first year of House Bill ninety-six, which is a two-year budget, of course, and it continued the fair school funding plan, which was implemented in the last two-year budget. House Bill ninety-six did make some changes in regards to the forecast. Now, it's, like I said, a current year plus three future years, when it used to be a current year plus four years. And they changed the due dates for these filings, it used to be November and May, and now it's August and February. From treasurer's CFO point of view, not the greatest time to file those in August, because a lot of things aren't even being done yet, as far as state revenue coming in, your final appropriations aren't due yet, so there's just, but those are the due dates, so those are, those are what we're going to go with. I could talk for the next couple of hours, probably, about the numerous bills right now that are in legislation. As far as property tax reform goes, it seems like a new one comes out about every week, if not more, but we don't know what's going to happen, what's going to go into effect, and so on. I can tell you, and this is not in here, but House Bill one eighty-six, right now, would probably affect the district, just based on projections from FY twenty-seven, fiscal year twenty-seven going forward, probably between seven and eight million dollars. It would lower property tax revenue.
I heard that in December it was closer to eleven.
Yeah, well, you're going to see different projections, I've seen nine, I've seen eight, I've seen seven, but it all depends on.
So we'd lose that much?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. But those are all, we don't know what's going on right now, so we're just gonna, we're just gonna leave those alone at the moment, and go with what we know right now. With regard to our state funding, you guys have heard me talk about this before, Little Miami is what they call a guarantee district, where we get guaranteed amount of money, not based on our enrollment, but based on, actually, fiscal year twenty revenue. I don't see that changing any time in the future, and then in, we've also taken in fiscal year twenty-six, our current year that we're in, we have all of our negotiated agreements, our staffing, and so on, has been incorporated into this. And then also, our medical insurance premiums, which play a large role also, as part of the benefit package. The increases for those are incorporated in this also.
So it's already figured in there, but you say it's going up to seven point seven five?
That was, that was current, it's going to go up for, well, that's current for twenty-five. Twenty-six, they're going up five percent for certified exempted, five and three-quarters for classified, and the reason those are different is certified changed some things on their end, as far as the way the plan was structured and so on, that they got to be a little, just a little bit lower. They changed their deductible and stuff, and the way it was, and they got rid of the embedded deductible that used to be in there. But that's why it changed a little bit.
So when you mentioned the FY twenty-six staffing plan?
Mm-hmm.
Are you going beyond that, though?
Yeah, well.
How about the teachers' contract, it was only a two-year.
Yeah, so we'll have twenty-six and twenty-seven that's in there for the contracts for all, for all, no, excuse me, certified, classified, and exempt. So after that, actually, it's just, there's no base increases in there, there's just what is considered a step raise when people move up, you know, each year, and that's about two-point-four percent. It's a typical step. Yeah, that's all reflected in here.
Perfect, thank you.
If we go to the next page, you can see what the standard forecast looks like. A lot of lines, obviously, we, it's a central income statement, we have our revenues, expenditures, and then, of course, our fund balance. And what I want to do is, I want to go into and make this look just a little more simple, obviously, we can talk about where our revenue comes from, and our expenses and everything, and we will. But I like to look at it, from looking at all these different lines, and all these different years, if, if we go to the next slide, actually. We simplify it. And I just want to point out a few things on this, before we get into a little more detail. Same information, actually, here as it was just on the prior slide. But on this one, you can just see, it's just broke down to revenues, renewal levies, and then expenditures, and so on. Couple of things I want to point out, as you can see, we are operating current year at a deficit of about, less than a million, about nine hundred eleven thousand. And going forward, you can see our deficit increasing, obviously. Now, that includes, with those deficits, that includes a renewal of the current levy that was passed clear back in two thousand and eleven. It's not a new levy by any means, it's the same levy we've had for fourteen years now. No new taxes, no additional funds, it's still the same ten-point, just under ten-point-seven, ten-point-six million and some change going forward. But you can see, though, if you look at that bottom line, ending cash balances without levies, you can, you can see what happens rather quickly if we were to lose that renewal levy. You barely have any money left in two thousand and twenty-eight, in two thousand and twenty-nine, and two thousand and thirty, you're obviously in the hole by a ton of money. But, so that's when you give the view of what it looks like with levies and without levies. Once again, we have five years on here instead of four, we'll probably, unless we can't quit, keep doing that, we'll continue to do the five years, because I'd like to see a little bit further out in the future, to be honest. But what will be submitted to the state will be going through year twenty-nine. If we can go to the next slide. About our revenue. Where does our revenue come for the district? Obviously, as everyone knows, it's, we are locally supported, as compared to being state-supported. As you look, roughly sixty-two percent of our revenue comes from local taxes. That is our real estate taxes, and also what they call the public utility tax. And then, the state sources, the state funding does say almost twenty-three percent, but that includes, if you can see on there, the state share of local tax, and that's eight-point-four percent. That is what we've been talking about on this renewal levy, that includes that ten percent and two-and-a-half percent credit that we've been getting for, from the state, because this levy was passed prior to November of thirteen. Since then, you can't have those credits anymore in levies. Want to point out real quick, too, the Senate did override, different area here, let's talk about the levy since we're talking about it. The Senate did override what the House did in July, just recently, last week, and so this will be the last time that this levy can be on with this, getting this credit. Next time, it'll be a new levy without the credit, so everyone would pay a hundred percent of the tax instead of eighty-seven and a half.
So we lose twelve-and-a-half percent if we don't pass it this time, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's going to cost twelve-and-a-half percent more to get to the exact same dollar amount. The state won't do the credit.
I mean, if we pass our levy this time.
Yeah, if we pass it this time, we still pay eighty-seven and a half cents on the dollar. If it doesn't pass, and it's put on the future as a new levy, it'll be a hundred percent of the dollar, so it'll be a dollar for dollar instead of eighty-seven.
Right.
The homeowner's exemption. It's a rollback. Is that the credit you're talking about?
This is the credit, yeah, only, certain people apply for the homestead exemption, yeah, but it's a ten percent, non-business credit, and then the two-and-a-half percent owner occupied. Those are the two that everybody gets for residential, for residential property. Those will not be on if this levy doesn't pass next time. So say if you put the ten-point-six on, and these are just all facts about the levy. If you put it on next time, it'll be like a new levy, essentially, and if it's able to put on, and it'll be a hundred percent instead of paying. So you have to pay more out of your pocket to get the same dollar amount, because the state won't credit us like they did before, unfortunately. But, but as you can see, each one of those bar graphs, that's our estimated revenue going forward, and if you can see the orange color, that's actually the part that makes up the levy, the renewal levy, so you can see, it's a decent portion, it's, you know, it's roughly sixteen percent of our operating revenue. So obviously, it's vital for the district. They are talking about renaming them, it's called an emergency renewal. Yeah, it's an emergency if you don't pass it, so, but they do want to talk about changing them, to just call fix some levies or something like that, which would be fine. I don't think the name of it really matters, but, but going forward, that's where you can see our revenue amounts are, and what the amount is of the renewal levy. We do have a little bit of money made up in all of the revenue, those are different fees we collect and so on, but that's very small compared to, obviously, the rest of the money on there.
How much money was generated with the property tax increase?
As far as?
Little Miami got for the increase in property taxes?
Well, it's over a certain amount of time, it would be over probably, because you don't get full collections, because they, one one's on a calendar year, one's going to fiscal. But I would say it's probably in a seven-million-dollar range, but you don't get it till full collections, it's a couple of years down the road. So you're talking like, you're going to get, because you have a calendar year, the county's on a calendar year and we're on a fiscal year, so you're going to get part of it one year and one school year.
And what's the first year, what's the first year Little Miami's going to get that money?
We're receiving it now, this year, in this first half.
And how much was that first half, do you remember offhand?
I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sorry. I'd have to look it up.
You can get that to us, too.
If you want, absolutely, yeah, I just didn't bring those numbers.
I guess I'm kind of naive when it comes to this, so then the next thing would be, when you say we get the full, what year would that kick in, where we get the full amount?
Let me think, it should be.
Seven million.
Should be twenty-six, this school year.
So this school year, we get the full seven million?
Because you're collecting a year behind, so right now, on twenty-five, the calendar year twenty-five, it's based off twenty-four assessment. So you're going to have a half of, well, it'll actually be next school year is the full year, because you're going to have.
Twenty-six to twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Is that reflected in this revenue here?
Yes, yep, yes, it is. Yep.
And real quick, this is the projection without levies, and this is the projection with the levy?
No, both of them have it, there's just that one line and the other, the simplified version just has a line that shows what the balance would be. So all these charts and everything actually include the levy, the passage of the levy, but the screen we're looking at before, if you want to go back one screen, Brad? Yeah, that one.
That one.
That's the one that shows where we'd be without the levy, right at the bottom, so you have your, with levies and without levies. Yeah. So your dark bold line is with levies, or, excuse me, not the bold, I mean, cash balance, below the dark bold, I'm sorry, where it goes with negative one-point-three in two thousand and thirty. But then, if you didn't pass the levy, the negative thirty-nine million is the number out in two thousand and thirty. Alright, thanks, Brad. If we go forward, so if we go to the next page here, we talk about state funding a lot, and I concentrate on that, because this, what happens with us for the state is, we're considered, yeah, I know you guys have heard me say this, but we're wealthy, we're considered a wealthy district on paper. These are our property values that have gone over, over the years, and you can see, obviously, the real estate valuations have gone up. There's two main factors that they look at in state funding, they look at property values, and they look at the median income for your residents within the district. And, and we score very high in both of them, obviously, we have a hundred square miles, so we're a big district. If we had, say, twelve thousand kids instead of almost six thousand, obviously, that property valuation would be half of what it is right now. But we do have a large area, and then with the increase within property taxes, or property values, it's pushed it up, so the way the state funding is, is it calculates, like I said, income, property valuation per pupil, and then it determines where you fall on the scale for funding. There's a minimum amount of funding you can get, like a percentage on your base cost, and that's ten percent. We are now at that ten percent level. We were at twelve-point-nine last year, now we're at ten percent, so we can't go any lower at state funding, because that's as low as they go. But we'll get into where we are in the guarantee and so on after that, because the formula doesn't work, that's why I always spend some time on this, it doesn't work for Little Miami, unfortunately. The dollar amounts times the number of students, in theory, should be the way you could produce the most revenue, but unfortunately, this doesn't work for us that way. So if we go to the next, next page here. Like I was talking about that base cost, we are a locally funded district, and as you can see, ninety percent is locally supported by the community, and the other ten percent on base cost, and base cost, when I say is, it's your basic things that you need for a school that the state's determined. Not what we determine, but what the state's determined, number of teachers, number of employees, all that kinds of things, different areas, that's their base cost. And as you can see, it's eighty thousand one hundred and twelve dollars, and only eight hundred and eleven dollars is coming from the state. The other seventy-three hundred is being produced here at the local level. And over time, the way the formula works, and also the way things have happened for the, there's two different kinds of tax, I won't get too far in the weeds here, but your, your, your residential property tax, and then there's commercial tax, your business taxes. A lot of it's shifted from business to residence over the years, and the residents pay a larger portion now than, that business has got better breaks over the years. So residents pay a lot more of the bill than we used to, of the total, and that's why the funding system doesn't really work very well statewide, to be honest. But like what I was talking about, guaranteeing, we'll show this on the next slide, too, but we're at what they call a guarantee, we're at FY, which is fiscal year twenty minimums, because if you take the formula times our kids, you have to get a certain dollar amount. If that dollar amount is less than what we got clear back in FY twenty, you get that amount from FY twenty. And if we go to the next slide here, I'll show you how that's changed over the years and where we are. As you can see in this chart at the top there, you can see we got our total base cost going across of around eighty-one hundred dollars, and you can see what the local share is, it's usually around seventy-three, and what the state amount is. The bar, bar graph, the bar chart beneath it, shows, actually, those dollar amounts is what that guarantee is I'm speaking of. And that is the difference between what the formula would produce for Little Miami, you know, the number of kids times that dollar amount, or the difference, or how much less it is than what we got in fiscal year twenty. So you can see those negative three million, three-point-four, three-six, three-four, three-one. Those are considered what they call the guaranteed amounts, so that can tell you how much we're relying on that guarantee, because the formula just doesn't work for us. So if they were ever to take that guarantee away, you could see that we would lose three-plus million dollars a year in, in revenue from the state. So at this point, we're, we're essentially, as all the treasurers like say, are you on the guarantee, you're on the formula, we're buried on the guarantee by over three million dollars. We will not be coming off it anytime soon unless they, they change something in the funding. But that just gives you an idea of how much the formula doesn't work for Little Miami, it works for other districts, great, you're always going winners and losers, but it just doesn't work great for us. If we go to the next page. These are expenditures, and I just want to talk about our expenditures, obviously, we're a service-oriented district, as all are. You can see that salaries and benefits make up the majority, about eighty-one percent, and, and that includes salaries, but also includes retirement, that has to be paid, STERS and SERs, and then also healthcare and those items. The next item right behind that, in the blue, is about fourteen percent, that's purchase services, and those are the services that essentially, we outsource for, a lot of it goes to Warren County Educational Service Center for special needs, and some other areas, too, but it's for different positions, different types of instruction and so on, that we can't provide, because we just can't go out and hire those, you know, particular people that we need all the time in their field, their technical field. So a lot of things go to purchase services, and then after that, you can see we have other expenditures, supplies, our utilities come out of there, our fuel and different things for transportation and all that. But you can see, this is our projection going forward, and it grows, and it grows at a pretty good rate, you're probably wondering, well, why does it grow so much? Well, let's go to the next slide, and we'll show you, this is the thing that drives everything in the district. Enrollment, now, these are, these are not going to always fit what you guys see, because these are what they call FTEs, full-time equivalents for kids. But, so these are, as you can see, we're going up, up and up, and we've been going up, I know for the last decade, we've been averaging about a hundred and fifty-five students a year. Enrollment drives everything in the district. Staffing, supplies, busing, you know, drivers, you name it, fuel, because we've got more routes, everything you can think of, benefits, because you have more staffing, I mean, everything gets driven essentially by enrollment. As I drive, you know, back and forth home and so on, and I'm driving around the districts, the houses are, they're pushing dirt everywhere still. Everybody says there's high interest rates and so on, but they're building houses and people are buying them, there's no doubt about it, you just drive it down the street here and see all kinds of dirt, anyway you want to go, houses are being built. So that tells you, and then, like I said before, it's bittersweet, it's awesome that you have people that want to come to your area, your district does very well, it's a great place to live, no doubt. But on the flip side of that, it comes at a cost, unfortunately, it's, it's just the way it is, so I said, it's a great problem to have, but it could, it could hurt things, just because financially, it's, it's tough. Go to the next slide, this is kind of just an overview of where we're going fund balance-wise, and like I said, you know, we're looking out in the future here, they could change state funding, they could change all kinds of things, this could change drastically. You know, we're fairly solid for the next couple of years, but you can see, we're still on the downward trend, we've always been a downward trend, unfortunately. We eat into that fund balance, and you can see, we actually have a negative projected right now in two thousand and thirty. Like I said, at the state level, that year won't be on the, on the forecast, it'll be two thousand and twenty-nine. And it is hard to, you know, project and make estimates when you get out, you know, four or five years, because you just don't know what the budget's going to bring, because there's new two-year budgets and so on. But that's when to give you kind of an idea of what it looks like and where, and where we're going. This includes our renewal levy, once again, this, this one-point-three negative out five years from now, does include our renewal levy. But I just want to show you a picture of, you know, how our revenues compared to our expenditures, our expenditures keep growing quicker than our revenue, unfortunately. Being on the guarantee, like I said, you know, we don't get any additional money when kids come to the district, so that's another reason, reason why our revenue is somewhat stagnant. And, but I just want to show a picture of that, what it looks like, and then another thing I want to show on the next slide is. And then another thing I wanna show on the next slide is, uh, what's it look like as far as operating, and I like to look at days of cash on hand. And, and this is, I think, a great picture too, because it just really tells you, how many days can you operate with those fund balances left over? And as you can see, you know, 154 last year, 139, and those sound pretty good to me. I think if you're three months or so, you know, in, uh, in reserves, that's fine, but you can see it dwindles, and it dwindles quickly. And, uh, you get down at 29 and 30, I mean, you're talking barely over a month, and 29 and 30, you're, you're in the, you're in the whole negative. So, yeah, we're, we're going towards that direction, obviously. Um, we are projecting way out into the future. At this point, a lot of things can change. Just wanted to give you an idea of where we're heading right now. Once again, this does include the, the renewal levy. Yes. Yep, this all includes the levy. Um, so it would drastically change. As we looked on that one slide, we go into the negative much sooner without it. And like I said, you know, if we, if we had more money coming in from the state, that'd be fantastic, um, but we don't. Like I said, we're considered wealthy, because we have high median income. Um, we also have high property evaluation per pupil. And, uh, and that's the two main factors on how they determine how much money you're gonna receive from the state. So we're gonna be at that 10%. It's not gonna change going, going forward. So we're gonna be on the guarantee for, for years unless they, unless they change the overall funding system, which quite honestly needs to be done. There's a lot of things that need to be done. I think property tax reform needs to be done, um, most definitely. And with that, obviously, school funding needs to be changed too, because, uh, it's, it's, it doesn't seem sustainable. It's, it's getting there. But that is a summarized version. I know it didn't seem real summary, and I apologize. But, uh, yeah, I, online, and I'll send it to you also. The, you have the 23 page that talks in detail about every single line item that's on the forecast. I know it's exciting, but, uh, but it does go into much more detail. And like I said, this forecast is gonna change. Um, the Senate's gonna vote more, the House is gonna vote more. They're gonna change a lot of things with, uh, as far as property taxes go. Um, it's gonna change. How quickly? That I don't have a crystal one, I can't tell you, um, but it will change. They always change somewhat. I think ours can change a lot. And not to the good, unfortunately. Um, it's just, it's just where we are.
So what, so looking at this right here, we have a levy that's on the ballot this year, and by the looks of it, probably in two years, it'll be another levy on the ballot unless there's significant change in Columbus.
At some point, yeah, and I've been, I've been preaching that for a while now. At some point, we're gonna have additional revenue needed, um, to keep up with the growth. Now, if growth were to flatten out, it'd be fantastic on my end, because it'd be easier to do, to keep track of everything. But no, but if growth keeps coming, coming like it is, and, uh, and we have to maintain, you know, classroom ratios and so on, busing students, everything, it's just, it gets magnified as more students come. And, uh, so no, we, at some point in the near future, luckily, we've pushed it back a little bit, and we had some of the grant funding over the years. We've pushed it back a little bit more, um, with the reappraisal, to be honest, like we were talking. And then that pushed back another levy just a little bit further, which is great. So we're never gonna ask for money if we don't need it. There's, there's no reason to. Well, I don't know why you'd wanna do that, because I've yet to meet anybody that wants to pay more in taxes. I don't, I don't know anybody else that wants to either. And that's why I'm saying there needs to be reform done, but they need to change the whole system. And this is my personal opinion, but they need to change school funding. Everybody wants to change it, but no one knows how. If I knew how, I probably wouldn't be sitting here. I'd be a billionaire or something.
Well, um, you saying that eventually, even if we pass this emergency levy, later on down the road, we will need more money.
At some point, yes.
So I kinda like what Kings is doing. They, uh, they're gonna pa- try to pass an earnings tax this time, and reduce a, a certain amount of millage on their property tax, which it kinda balances out a little bit, not a lot. But to me, that seems like a reasonable thing to do.
I, I think the earnings tax, based on, you know, property owners of, you know, we all, if we all own property, yeah, where our property taxes have gone up, there's no doubt about it. I think an earnings tax is a great way to go. Earned, not, we don't wanna mess with pensions and social security and all that kind of things. I don't think that's right. But, uh, but an earnings tax is probably the way to go, and the way legislature's been in Columbus is that it almost seems like they want you to go to earnings tax, because they're keep doing things to get rid of property tax levies. Which, which makes sense. You get earnings tax, then you get some people that don't even own homes, that would contribute, that live in your school district. So I think that's a good possibility. And then I like that idea too of reducing your other, try to...
Tax amount.
Yeah, to try to make it a little bit easier, where you can reduce some of your property tax and, and depending. And the beautiful thing about the earned earnings tax, um, or any type of income tax is it grows with your economy. Of course, it can go the other direction too. That's, that's the drawback, is if it goes down, you will collect less. But, uh, but most of the time, I mean, unless you're in a major, 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 um, uh, what'd you call it? Yeah, recession. Geez, I couldn't think of recession. I kept thinking Great Depression. We don't want the Great Depression. But, uh, but no, but, yeah, so they can go down. That's the only drawback. But, uh, but I think that's probably the way to go, and try to lessen, lessen the burden going one way and go the other.
I do know that Goschen has never come back for any levy since they passed, they have a regular...
Yes. Yeah, and that you're correct. They've not been on, they've not had an operating levy that I'm aware of since they passed it.
No, they haven't. They haven't at all, so...
But, uh, so it's worked well for them, and they are, they are starting to grow like we did years ago right now. They've got a lot of housing developments and so on that are, that are coming along there, so. But like you said, if more people move to the area, that does raise the overall amount. So if it's 1% of this amount, and it got bigger, then it's 1% of that amount. I'm just throwing 1% out there just for easy numbers.
That's what theirs is.
It grows. Yeah, yeah, most, most districts are. I've seen some across the state that, believe it or not, are like one and a half, one and three quarters. Some of them are pretty high. But, uh, but no, it's, I think it's something, it's a good direction to go. I think it's something we should look into, and see what we can do overall as far as, uh, maybe lessening one. But it's, it's, it's still tax, but until they change school funding.
So really, it isn't, isn't the schools' fault so much as up in Columbus?
If they would, yeah, if they would change funding, um, I mean, we're one of the, we're one of the lower spenders in the entire state. So we're very conservative in our spending, um, and we've always been that way. And as far as I know, we'll stay that way. But as long as they keep the same system that we have, yeah, I don't see it changing a whole lot, but if they could, that'd be fantastic.
In your opinion, what's driving the deficit spending? Is it enrollment, would you say?
Yes, yeah, pretty much, yeah. Um, yeah, as we get more and more kids every year, it just adds to it, because we're getting more of staff, you know, and, and staffing's our main expense, obviously. And as we get more kids, we staff more, and then, you know, and then we, we got more buses, we got more fuel, we got more routes. At some point, we got more aides. Um, our... Yeah, more purchase services. Our, our special education spending is pretty high. Um, as all districts, they are. Much-needed services, by no means not needed. They are needed. But it's not cheap by any means. And, and you only get so much money from the state for that. It's not a lot. So a lot of it, you know, it's a local expense. But like I said, they're much-needed service, though. You have to have it. Yes.
All of the students, and, you know, we talked about maybe 900 students in the last, uh, what was it, eight years?
Something like that, yeah.
But we didn't, we didn't get more dollars for those 900 students, or, or, we're just growing in deficit spending, because we have to have teachers, we have to have, bus routes, we have to have bus drivers, we have to have all the things that go along with it.
We're in that same spot Lakota was in, many years ago, where they just kept growing and growing and growing, and they were like on a guarantee also, and they weren't getting any revenue. And they were just blowing, blowing up at the seams, you know, as far as subdivisions and everything. It's a very big district also. And, uh, and they weren't getting any additional revenue. So, yeah, if we went on a guarantee and they had a different formula, where, you know, we got 150 kids and we got, you know, revenue for 150 kids, that'd be fantastic.
Some, which is what we have, we get the same amount no matter how many, um, additional students come in. Everybody just pays a little bit less.
Exactly. That, that levy is, is less expensive now to the individual homeowner than it was when it was passed.
It was like 13 points?
13.95 mils.
And now it is 5?
Projected to be 5.7 from the county auditor, yes. So, yeah, it's, it's cheaper, because it, but it's the same, that's because there's so many more people, more, the, more slices of the pie in that, in that 10-plus million. So it's, it's gotten cheaper individually, but same dollar amount it's been for 14 years.
Thank you.
So it was more than a summary, I apologize. But it's, it's, it's good stuff. If you guys have any other questions or whatever, obviously, please let me know. This is gonna change. I'll be bringing another one back to you, I can guarantee it, um, at some point, probably in the near future, because I, I see Columbus changing things, and it's gonna affect us.
Well, it's good conversation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Really is. Gives us a little more to think about. Alright, moving on to, oh, I'm sorry. We need to, uh, roll call?
So move?
Or a move?
Then we gotta roll comms over there.
Roll call, we already did it, yeah. Mrs. Horvath?
Yes.
Mrs. Elmer?
Yes.
Mr. Seibert?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Mrs. Grace?
Yes.
Thank you, and I hope I didn't bore you too much with this.
Well, thank you. No, I don't think...
That's all I got at the moment.
This is better than usual, Terry.
Well, it's better than usual? That doesn't, that doesn't sound good.
No.
I've been using the summarized version for a while.
It was good. It was good.
It's, it's, quite honestly, it's important, but it is getting, when you go a few years out past the budget and all that, it is, you're just using historical trends and so on to figure out your dollar amounts.
Madam Chair, uh, I know we're gonna discuss some policies here. I have another meeting I must attend, and, uh, the suggestions I have, which this is just a discussion, I will email you two. So I must excuse myself.
Thank you for being here as much as you could. Alright, moving on to new business. We're going to discuss, um, policy 0131, legislative. These are bylaws, uh, recommended for the Board of Education. So if we will look at... Yes. This policy is the first one in the packet.
And there's one, there's one part that we've looked at that, um, we'd like to change. And if you look down at the bottom, where it says bylaws shall be adopted, do you have it, Mary?
Yes.
Amendment repealed or suspended, uh, an affirmative vote of, it says three, but these things are so very important that it's, I think it would be nice to have, uh, a four-member vote on that. And also, if you'll go on, it says policy shall be adopted, amended or repe- repealed by an affirmative vote of, I again think four members should be there, because policies, um, and bylaws are very important, and I think it should take, a four-member vote to change them. Any discussion?
Yes. It, so it's always been three members, correct?
It has been in this policy, yes.
It's always been three. And how long have we had that previous policy?
Yeah, it's been a while.
We've never had an issue until now.
It just seems like, it just seems like we've spent how many hours on these policies? And I just think that it should be, um, it should be four members if you really, really change something.
You're not talking about with every decision, just the one?
No, just when something comes up, yes.
You're talking, so if someone introduces a new policy, we need four votes? Is that what you're saying, Bobby?
No. What I'm saying is we wanna change a policy that we have. We need to have four votes.
Oh, for everything.
Opting a policy, then, wouldn't it?
Well, also that, yes.
I thought, I remember our discussion just vaguely with Bill, that if we were to change it, it would make things more difficult.
To have four?
Why would we make that more, you know, more difficult?
I think because my, and you can join in here if you would like. I just think like, uh, if you change, uh, there's a policy and it, it's come up for review, and, uh, it's caused some problems. I think, I would think that a four-member vote would be better than a three-member vote.
I, I would disagree. I, I think right now, uh, I think we just leave it as is. I, I said, I, I think I know the reason why, uh, we're interested in moving it to a four-person vote. And, uh, I would not be in favor of that. I think pretty much people can read the tea leaves as far as why we're wanting to put policies that may not be able to get changed so easily. And I think we just need to go with the majority of the board, as we've always done.
How about you?
I'm fine with it just being the majority. I feel like that works.
Alright, we'll leave it like that. Alright. Yes.
So it will just go to in the list of policies on adoption.
Alright, that's good. Alright, discussion on policy 3112, board staff communications. Go down to D. D is a little, um, and we talked to the lawyer about this. This is a little general. So if you look on the next page under D, this is something that we talked about at our last board meeting. We had, uh, four people decide that they, they like this. And, um, so I'm suggesting that we go to this policy, this part of the proposed policy. Any discussion?
Well, I, after I've watched the special meeting and listened to the discussion, I've changed my feelings about it. Based on some of the conversation and based on just my, just my own review. Moving forward, and I know Regina has mentioned this too, all students and staff should be more familiar with who board members are, and visits should be expected. I think that's something that we can all agree on.
When I, when I was a teacher, I had no idea who our, well, I knew maybe one, because they were a friend. I had no idea who the board members were. Uh, I don't think our teachers know all of us.
But should they? I mean, just be somewhat familiar? There's only five of us.
Right.
As Mr. Wallace mentioned. And I think, um, you know, we are not just visitors. We're elected officials entrusted, as Dave said, by our community to govern this district, and we should not be perceived as a security threat.
But I also feel like we should be escorted through. I feel like that's, that's a protocol that, uh, most schools do, and, and I have, I think that that should be our policy.
This was, this was another reason, because I was with you before. My preference is I want an escort, just because I have a hard time finding my way around the building sometimes.
Right.
But we're gonna be taking a staff member away from their day-to-day operations to escort us around, if it's an unannounced visit especially. And I don't think that that points to the mission. And another issue I have with that is if a staff member isn't comfortable escorting a board member around for any reason, that's gonna create unnecessary tension for all involved. So I think, um, the draft that we're looking at, that we touched on at our special meeting, after signing in, the escort protocol, after signing in, board members may request that a building administrator or designate a staff member accompany them during their visit. That's just my perspective on that.
I value your, your input. I value your input. I'd like to hear from you, Diane.
On this one, I just wanted to make sure that it could be announced or unannounced, but I have no issues with following the, the usual protocols that other visitors have, because I look at it from the vantage point of the students. And I think that the safety part of it and the comfort part of it takes precedence over us wanting, I don't know, the free access. Now, if I thought that you couldn't accomplish your goal in visiting the school by having someone walk you around, then I would rethink that. But I don't know how it infringes on you being able to see what you need to see and experience the school, just because someone is with you. That is familiar.
Alright, so we really can't do anything because Wayne has left.
He's going to email you, he said, or talk to you.
Alright.
I, I have a few things to say, Bobby.
Alright.
Uh, first off, I think it's, uh, speaks volumes, the fact that these board, us board members are not in the schools enough during the day to where they don't know who we are. So the fact to say the board does not know, or the teachers or the staff does not know who the board members are, I think is a, is an indictment on this board of not being out in the classrooms, not walking around the schools. As a parent, I've, I've walked around, obviously, in the evenings. Uh, I, I've met during the day, uh, met them. But, but also, I tell you what, it's really eye-opening when you get to walk in and you see, uh, the building as it operates. I think to put down a safety or security risk, I think... I think to put down a safety or security risk, I think is pretty embarrassing and, and I think it's, I, I think it's fear mongering. Uh, do you have that policy that we talk about? We wanna follow the, uh, what is it, our, our, uh, protocols? Do we have a copy that we can read right now, what that protocol is, uh, that you want the board to follow?
Concerning, I have one.
You, you, is that the protocol that was sent?
The visitor protocol?
It's like it's right, it's right here.
Where's, where's that?
Right here, under, in the next page. Under D.
At the bottom.
Yeah, but that wasn't the one that was sent out.
This is, this is the one that it was requested by.
Actually, I believe you.
Different, uh, board members.
Yes.
We want this copy.
If you could read that, what the protocol is that you want the board, or I guess.
This is a visitor access to Little Miami buildings. Purpose: to ensure the safety and security of students, staff, and visitors within Little Miami school buildings. A visitor is any person who is not employed in the building or doing approved work in the building. That defines a visitor.
I'm sorry, I just stopped you there.
No, no, that's fine.
So, are you a visitor, Mrs. Morgan?
Uh, no.
You're not employed in that building?
I do approved work in that building, no.
Okay, but then a school board member could also do approved work in that building to do their visiting. So I'm, I'm just saying, I, I think to, to say, to say that the, the school board members are a safety and security risk, I think that is fear mongering. I, I think that the board members should be in these buildings and in these hallways and I can tell you from experience, I have walked and I say, I like this tour. Well, we don't have, we don't have anyone available. That was, that has been given to me, okay? I went, uh, two weeks ago, I think I checked on a couple of classrooms and I was told we don't have anyone available. Then I feel bad because then I'm taking the teacher, or excuse me, taking the principal away from her duties in the morning, that she's got a lot going on, so they can find someone to escort me. And I said, is there anybody else? And they said, no, we don't. You have to wait here, okay? So I think that's, honestly, I think that's fear mongering. We're only talking five people. We get lanyards where you're, where, around us and the staff is notified, hey, you have an HVAC person, he's been cleared. You have a PTO member, because I think we're gonna go in there, PTO members are allowed to go unescorted, right? But a school board member who's elected is not? I'll be honest with you guys, I, I think that's.
So what are you gonna accomplish going in without an escort that you wouldn't accomplish with one?
I will be able to go without needing a, an escort. I'll be able to walk around the building when I want to, when I please. I don't have to wait for anybody that says we don't have an escort available.
Well, that's a different issue. That shouldn't be an issue. If there is someone saying they won't walk you around, or if they're saying that there is no one available to walk you around, that's a problem. If that's what the, what is being put in place. So I would say that's a different issue that has to be addressed by the school, the front office, or whomever it is that's not providing it. If, I would say that shouldn't happen and I would agree with that. But I would like to know what you're going to get out of those visits that would be different.
What I'm gonna get is I'm gonna get access to the building when I wanna get access to the building. I'm not gonna be, uh, 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 sitting in, in office, in, in the front office waiting for someone to be available.
Yeah, I, and I don't think you should. I would agree with that.
I understand that, but it briefs well. In theory, we briefed it, but I can tell you that when I went to the school, I had to wait, okay?
That's very long.
Yeah, and I remember saying that I thought that part was wrong.
But, and then it happened again, is what I'm saying, Diane. I went again.
Well, I, right, I understand, but I'm saying that would, to me, is a different thing that needs to be addressed separately.
Right.
We have people just sitting around, we hire a bunch of people sitting around the office waiting to give tours all day. I would imagine people have work to do.
I don't think that it happens often enough that it would be that big of a hindrance for them to be able to make a plan for someone to walk around. Uh, it's just a matter of, you know, comfort. It's not that we're risks, a big, a safety risk. It's not that they're, we're trying to be fear mongers. It's just, you know, being respectful of their visitor policy so that everyone's comfortable and you can still, you know, achieve your goal of seeing what you wanna see around the building. And if students are more comfortable, then that means something to me.
So the students are more comfortable. Do they know who the PTO members are? Do the students know who the PTO people are that walk around the building? Do they know who the contractors are? Do they know who the, the people are working on the HVAC? Are the students aware of who those people are? Uh, whoa, whoa, hold on a second, I'm, I'm, I'm asking Diane right now.
Those are different, those are different goals, what they're there for.
How, how is it different?
If you're there to walk the building, to be able to see what's going on in the building, to be able to see, you know, pretty much anything you want, whether it's students in a classroom, or teachers teaching, or walls, or desks, or, that is different than someone who's coming there to fix the air conditioning, or someone who is coming there to work, uh, the snack booth.
But you just mentioned it comes about security, correct? So it has no idea what their purpose is. You just mentioned about if it makes the students feel safer.
I just.
So what you, I guess it's the fear mongering.
I, I find it hard to believe that they don't also fol, follow certain protocols when they come to the building.
This is.
To me, it's simplistic.
Visitor protocols, yes.
Read, read the vote.
And this was another thing that checked me a little bit. It says pre-authorized vendors and PTO members, volunteers who have passed a background check, which, once this policy is decided, if we are to be unescorted, I believe we need to have a background check.
I agree.
We can go to the state of Ohio and get background checks.
I think that's a no-brainer. Who have passed a background check may have unescorted access in the building for approved work purposes. PTO can do it. Vendors can do it. Board members cannot.
Okay, but.
But it's two different things. There, it, I mean, if, if you want them to be escorted to their volunteer thing, to make it more even or something, that's fine with me. But when you're going through the whole building, wanting access to anything and everything and seeing everything that you want to see, that is different than someone who is reporting to the cafeteria to volunteer to sell the snacks, or someone who is reporting to the eight, you know, the air conditioning unit to be able to fix the air cond. To me, it's, it's apples and oranges. I don't see it as the same thing. If these volunteers are wanting free access to the building to be able to walk around and view things, you know, whether it's classrooms, teachers teaching, office space, walls, then that's completely different to me.
Matters, what you, your answer, so you're saying is it depends what you look for. So if I'm looking, if I show up.
How much access? How much access? If they're going to one spot to do one thing, to me, that's different than touring the whole facility.
How? What, what, what if someone is.
Because you're touring the whole building, you have free access to the building.
I guess the question is what is Little Miami afraid of not wanting to give access to the whole building?
I don't think, I'm gonna say, it's my turn. I don't think that, that, um, we're afraid of anything. What I think of is I'm thinking from a teacher's perspective. I think that when a board member is in there, we are over, we sign, I sign contracts, uh, we, we make final decisions on some teachers. I think that they feel more comfortable if they have somebody there that's leading us around. That's my opinion.
I, yeah, I will agree to disagree. I can tell you, when I was a school teacher, when I taught.
How many years did you teach?
I taught, uh, about four years.
Okay.
It, but, but I tell you what, the attitude was, I don't change my show for anybody. The lesson I'm gonna teach, bring everybody in. If the kids were misbehaving, I invited their parents, come to class, okay? It wasn't a matter of anyone making me nervous. I'm not gonna change my show for anybody, whether it been at the time the superintendent, whether it be the principal, whether it be a board member, I'm still gonna teach my lesson and that's the attitude they have to have. So to say that we make anyone nervous, I mean, the superintendent makes people probably more nervous than I do because she can, she can, uh, uh, suspend somebody on the spot, send them home. I can't do that. And, and I think honestly, I think we're giving away too much of our, our board responsibilities. And I would encourage everyone up here to go walk the school, walk it during the class period, walk it during the daytime. Just don't wait for a, they'll catch all the, hey, walk the school when you want to. I would say walk it, walk it during the day. Why don't you see how?
If you're working at a job during the day, that's, I mean, it's just not realistic.
Well, there's certain.
I'm a principal at an elementary school and I, I can't just leave my building to do that.
I'm sure the off days, I'm sure you have some off days at your Catholic school that are gonna be in-service days here, right? As a school board member, I'm not gonna tell you how to crack the nut or drive your rig.
I'd have off days, I wish I did.
Okay, but I'm, I'm not gonna tell you how to drive your rig, but that's your, your responsibility, if, if that's how you wanna do it. I'm not gonna be derelict.
What is, what is your goal for being able to go through the building alone? What is that gonna get you that the other scenario won't?
I would like to take my time.
Just be specific about that.
I would like to take my time and I like to read what's on the walls, I like to see what's in the classrooms, I like to see how classes are being changed. I wanna see how we have a backpack, a clear backpack policy that's not being enforced. I wanna see.
And you won't see those things if someone's walking with you?
I can do it my own time, I'm not gonna be pressed. I can take all afternoon, just walking around, reading everything on the walls.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, and I'm saying, why do I have to have somebody escort me? Why can't I just walk around? There's only five of us that do it.
Well, I, I've already expressed why I think, to me, it's not necessary. You're still gonna achieve what you wanna achieve, but.
And I agree.
I guess we're gonna have to.
This policy has already had a first read. I can put it on and you guys can vote on it and we'll go that route. It doesn't sound like we're going to.
Yeah, it's.
Three, so we can.
I will tell you, I have a question, though. When it says, "The school board members should request," that's a little broad right there when it says "should." What, what do you mean by "should"?
Where are you talking?
Yeah, where?
In the policy that you guys are about ready to go for a second reading, I am asking you what that means in D. When it goes down to under escort, it says, "After signing in, board members should request," right?
Right.
Okay, they should. You should do a lot of things. We should walk around the buildings during the day, right? We should, we should visit the schools more often. We should find time to look around and represent the community. That's what we should do, but we're not.
Do you want me to change it to what you're saying?
And like Diane, like Diane has.
We'll leave it, we'll leave it as should.
We're all different. We all carry out our role differently.
Yeah, we'll leave it as should.
I thought you wanted me to change it.
No, 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 I just wanted to bring that up with the should.
All right, so I haven't heard from Wayne, so, um, this will go on since it's.
As is.
All right.